I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we're gonna... Yeah, so I just want to read my little... So, good evening. This business meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom in compliance with the RSU 38 policy, BED, remote participation in school board meetings. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the maranacook.org YouTube channel. Please be aware that during the course of the meeting, the microphones on the viewing audience will be muted, except during the identified portions of public comments at this meeting. This is a budget meeting and public comment on budget items may be given at number 5G. This is also a public comment section for non-budget... There also is a public comment session for non-budget items, which is number 6. If you would like to speak during the public times, please use the chat feature on Zoom to signal Mrs. McGregor, and she will communicate with me. In-person speakers, please sign up on the clipboard on the table by the door. All individuals that wish to speak, whether in person or virtual, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town you live in. Please note that individuals that do not live in our member communities may or may not be granted permission to speak at the discretion of the board chair. We also ask that speakers limit their individual comments to two minutes, and if someone speaks ahead of you that has a similar view, please reference their comment. We thank you in advance for your constructive comments. So now we'll do roll call.
So attendance and all votes will be done through roll call. So when your name is called, board members, please capture your vote with three available options of yes approve, no disapprove, or abstain. We're going to quickly do a roll call vote at this time so that we can make sure everybody hears each other, whether you're virtually or in person. Having said that, Kim Bo...
Present.
Dave Gilman.
Here.
Jade Parker? No, not right now. We'll check later. Dane Wing?
Here.
Tyler Dunn?
I'm here, Jay. I may drop the call a few times throughout the meeting, and I apologize if that happens.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. We'll be on the lookout for you. Kathy Jacobs?
Here.
Melissa Tobin? Is she online? Nope. Patty Gordon?
Here.
There we go. Rebecca Lambert?
Here.
Betty Morrell?
Here.
Sean Roderick? Not online. Kelty Bowden?
Here.
Awesome. And David Twitchell?
Here.
All right, back to you.
Okay, so we're gonna start a meeting tonight with our annual report from the district auditor. So Bill, you're on.
Evening, everyone. All right, so your June 30, 2021 audit. Good thing was, is that there was only one small minor change to prior year audits. You'll notice that in your '21 audit, there was no fiduciary funds. Your student activity counts that were classified as student... As fiduciary funds actually got changed by GASB. They are now special revenue funds, so they're actually in the back of your non-major. So you don't have any fiduciary fund anymore. So that's the only change compared to last year. Same as every year, page 1, 2, and 3, most important pages on the document. That is your independent audit report, where we form our opinion. You have a non-qualified opinion, which is the opinion you want in any kind of audit. Pages 3 through about 12 is your MDNA. I usually mention the MDNA because that is the only part of the document that management can put information into. You'll notice on page 4, it actually says unaudited up top. That's because when the information is put in by management, we don't actually audit it. Usually, the information that's put in there is, you know, any kind of factors related to your 22 budget, any kind of trends or anything like that. I think right now, though, you guys use a standardized boilerplate that we put together. I'm just gonna touch on a few numbers on page... I don't know if you have this in front of you or not. On page 14 is your statement of your asset balance sheet and stuff like that. But no, that's not what I want. It's actually Statement C, which is on page 17. So usually, a very important number that's, you know, good for educational purposes is what your fund balance is. And that June 30th, 2021, your fund balance in totality was $1.338 million. Of that, $892,000 was assigned to your FY '22 budget. So you had an unassigned fund balance of $438,726. And why I mention fund balance is, it has two major purposes. One is cash flow. If you ever notice that your fund balance gets really low, that certain times during the year, you may have issued paying bills, and you have to get a short-term note to be able to pay your bills and whatnot, and then obviously with that note, you have to choose a year, so you have to pay that back and whatnot, and then interest associated with it. So usually, what we've been determining would not cause a short-term note is if your cash flow equaled 60 to 90 days of your operating budget. So if you took your budget, divided it by 12, multiplied by 3, that's a good tool for fund balance that we've learned over the years. Also, I should mention, the state statute change on RSUs or school districts in the state of Maine on what they can maintain for fund balance. In prior years, it used to be that 3% for three years. Now it's at 5%. So it actually... It actually, in '21, it might have been 7% or 8%. They're actually guiding it... There were... It was up around 7, and then they... I think they revoted it, but I think they kept 21 at 7% or 8%. But for '22 and beyond, it's at 5%, just FYI. Okay? What that means is, what that means is, if you took your FY '22 budget, you multiplied it by 5%, that's what they're telling you that you could have for unassigned fund balance. Not totality, just unassigned fund balance, which is your $438,000. Okay? So it adds up right now, you don't have any cash flow issues that I'm aware of. Mandy hasn't called me screaming that she's running out of money or anything, so that's... Your minor capital projects has $2.1 million in fund balance. I'm assuming that's gonna be spent probably over the next year or so on projects. In FY '21, your general fund took in $19.4 million, most of that being the local taxes and also the state taxes. You spent 18, just under $19 million, transferred out a little bit. So your fund balance actually went up about $272,000. So that's a pretty good number, you know, for 14, $19 million expenditures and revenue having $200,000 of additional, you know, increase in fund balance. Not large, it's not small. It's a good, solid average, you know, for a fund balance of what we share. I would caution you, just a little bit of caution here, that, you know, if your '22 budget, you had a really bad year in your '22 budget, because I did see that you used $800,000 of fund balance for your '22 budget. So if you did have a '22 bad budget and had to actually dip into that money, your '23 budget might be really tough to put together, because you wouldn't have that cushion anymore. And that's the second kind of tool that you use for your fund balance. It's a budgeting tool. It's a bumper. You know, if you have it, it's good. You know, you can use it instead of increasing local taxes. But when it's gone, and you don't have that buffering tool anymore, you know, the only way to have an increase is to go right straight to the local taxes, just FYI. Um, after that, you know, we get into the notes. I always say this to anybody that wants to read this document, and again, I wouldn't recommend you read this document. I don't even like reading this document. If you ever want to read this document, though, Note 1. Always start with Note 1. Terminology gives you all the descriptions and what, you know, fund balance, net asset, any of that stuff means. So if you ever wanted to read it, Note 1 would be one to start. And none of our notes change from FY '21 to still your cash investments. You know, we tie out all your cash, obviously. And we also check to make sure it's FDIC covered or if you guys have an additional insurance. So that's Note 2. Note 3 is fixed assets. Note 4 is general long-term debt. Because a lot of times, what you'll notice is, when you look at your statements, you just see one number, one large number, especially with fixed assets and debt. So what the note does is actually breaks it down a little bit further. So you have a little bit more description of what you have for debt and what you have for fixed assets. And that's what the notes are, just more of a breakdown of some of what the figures is. And then it also tells you what your restricted or your committed fund balances are and stuff like that. After that, you get into your budget to actual, Schedule 1, Schedule A. It's your revenue and your expenses. It actually shows you what you did from budget to actual. You guys had it... Again, you guys had a good year last year, most of your budget figures. I don't think you overspent any articles last year, but if you did, I'm sure Mandy or Bridget would have told you. After that is your non-major funds. You have some special revenue funds, some capital funds, some trust funds, which are usually scholarships. You guys actually have quite a bit of scholarships up here. And what those are, is those we call... We consider those non-major. When you look upfront, when you have your general fund and your capital minor fund, your capital... Your minor capital project fund, those are considered major funds. We have to show those upfront, according to GASB. Anything else that's not major, we show in the back, which would be like your federal grants, your state grants, like I said, your trust funds, any capital projects that you had that wouldn't be major. And we break them out between balance sheet, revenue. We show each one individually. It's easier to maintain that way. And then obviously, in FY '21, you were a single audit. So after, you know, the major funds is your single audit piece. We had to test some programs. So anytime you spend $750,000 on federal funds, they do require that your auditor complete a single audit, additional costs and other than just the regular audit. And what we have to do is, any... We have to go through this whole process, and it's become painstakingly hard over the years. But what it is, is every year, if you get a single audit, a separate program every year within the three-year period. So, you know, it's depending on what it is. It's usually the last year's, your CRF funds. So most schools got millions of dollars in CRF or Easter money, so a lot of those programs are tested. If it's not one of those, it could be school lunch, could be local tournament, could be Title I. Those are usually the main four programs that get tested. So financially, the school district's healthy. You've got a pretty good fund balance. I'm a little worried about, you know, if your '22 budget falls apart, how '23's gonna work? But, you know, Mandy will probably keep on top of that for you. Just keep, you know, Mandy, just in case, you know, you see revenues dipping or expenses, you know, coming close to being spent. You know, if you guys spend that $800,000 of money that you put for a fund balance, your FY '23 budget's gonna be... It's gonna be tough to put together, so just FYI. Your management letter this year was pretty clean. I think I wrote up a couple things about your student activity accounts, missing some documentation stuff. I think that's very common in schools. Most of the time, financial people aren't the ones responsible for that, for those accounts. So a lot of times, you know, some things will get passed the secretary, the principal, and whatnot. Any questions? I knew I just threw a lot of information out to you and everything. Good thing is, good thing is, you're... Financially, you're pretty secure. You're pretty sure financially. The only concern I have is, you just probably lost... I consider one of the best business managers in the state of Maine. You know, she didn't retire. She was top quality, but, you know, Mandy learned from her, and Mandy's pretty financially savvy. The only problem is, you took away the payroll person, which payroll is really tough in schools due to the union contract and stuff. So I'm expecting the '22 audit probably won't go as smooth as the prior ones. But once you get those two positions, you know, moving forward and get going, I think Mandy will be a good financial individual for you guys at the school district.
Any questions from the board?
Can we get a copy of that audit report if we're remote?
It's on the website.
It's on the website. Okay. Thank you, Mandy.
You're welcome.
Okay, I guess we're good. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. So the next thing on our agenda is a little celebration. Actually, it's a big celebration. We are going to celebrate the... I gotta make sure I get this exactly right. The girls' Class B Nordic ski team, okay? I could have the coaches come up to the podium, please? We have one coach... This is on... We have one coach that's not here yet, but we'll start with Coach Kathy DePray. Thank you very much for all you've done, and congratulations. And the next one is for Steve DeAngelis, and thank you. And give certificates to the team. So when I call your name, if you would just come up, and we're gonna line up all right here behind us after you get your certificate. Do it again. So I'm just gonna read all of these so that we'll know the whole team, even if the girls aren't here. Mr. DeAngelis, Mr. Pray will just tell me if they're here or not. I want everybody's name to be read. So the first one is Ella Martinez Nocito. Nina Martinez Nocito. Congratulations. I think the coach would like to say a few words.
I just want to thank the board for providing this recognition for the kids and for waiting for us to get done with the play. And it's a whole team effort all the time. The girls won the state championship, but the boys, all those guys with pirate hats on and stuff like that who just came from a play rehearsal, they don't always dress like that, but they just came from rehearsal, and they are here to support the girls as well. And I just wanna say that the recognition really means a great deal, but they don't do it for the recognition. If you didn't notice, if you didn't have your magnifying glass, you might not have noticed the one line they got in the KJ for winning the state championship. But fortunately, they don't do it for the recognition. They're incredibly gritty and tough and work together so well as a team this year, especially they just pull it together at the end. Brutal conditions, 60 degrees and really slow and slush, and with water running over the trail the first day, and then glare ice the second day, and petrifying downhills. And they overcame that stuff. And that's one of the great things about Nordic skiing, I'm just gonna put in the plug, is that to be successful at it, you have to be tough mentally and physically, but you also have to be incredibly adaptable, and these guys are just that. And they made us really proud. And by the way, out of this crew here, six of the 13 all KVAC winner, all academic athletes are on this team. So thank you again. I super appreciate it.
I need a picture of you guys.
Oh, awesome.
So the next section of our meeting tonight is the budget meeting, and we're lucky enough to have the select folks from hopefully all four of our communities. So before we start, what we'd like to do is have you all introduce yourselves and tell us what town you're from. You'll have to speak really loud unless... Or you go up to the podium if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Dennis. I am on the Reedfield Select Board and am the chairperson. I thought I'd introduce some other Reedfield Select Board people.
Perfect.
All right. Oh, sorry.
Hi, friends. I never met a microphone I didn't love. Thank you so much. This is fantastic. This right here, this is Carol... Oh, hi there. Too hot. Too hot, Bill. This is Carol Doran-Boss, also of the Reedfield Select Board. Mr. Ralph Eno of the Reedfield Select Board. There we... Yes, okay. Yes, that's Ralphie Boy. This is Sean Keegan of the Reedfield Select Board. This is Catherine Woodsum, right back here, of the Reedfield Select Board. And the Reedfield Town Manager is Mr. Eric Dyer. Thank you very much. That's the Reedfield bunch.
Thank you very much for all coming.
Yes. Do you want to keep going? Let's keep looping.
Pass that mic.
No, you do it yourself.
Thanks for the intro. My name's Eric Kristowski. I'm the Wayne Town Manager. And I think Amy Black is here on TV.
All right, we just have a friend over here, that's all. Is there anybody else? Anybody in the fun corner over here? No? All right, I'm watching you guys, like the back row at church. Okay, is that it? That's everybody? Super, thanks.
Great, thank you. Do we have any select folks online? So we'd like to have them introduce themselves as well. Welcome. Is there anyone else on Zoom that is from the Select Board?
This is Amy Black from Wayne.
Okay, welcome. Thank you. Okay, so... Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Jay now, and he's gonna start going through the different lines that we're gonna talk about tonight. So if you folks have any questions while we're going.
So while Mrs. McGregor's pulling up our slideshow presentation, I'll just again thank the board very much. I had a family emergency that necessitated not being able to have last week's meeting, so I feel like I'm a little bit a week behind. The Select Board, you guys are all here. I don't think you would have seen all of this stuff last week, but I think it's okay. You'll see kind of another step in the process of how we're putting the budget together. So thank you guys very much for being here. And of course, as we're going along, we are certainly would love to answer any questions that you guys might have as we go forward as well. So I know we'll probably have a robust discussion, so it's all good. I know I can't follow Steve DeAngelis. He's an institution here at Maranacook, and I just want to take a moment and thank him for everything he's done. He's a coach that's been here for 30-plus years and created quite a culture of success and hard work on his ski team. So I just want to put that out there as well. So having said all of that, very quickly, here's our budget. I'm just run through the first couple slides for everyone here, just more as a reminder. And then for the board people, excuse me, the Select Board people as they're here as well. Our board goal is to balance the needs of all members of the RSU 38 school community while maintaining physical responsibility. So I gave them some team directives as we began working on this back in... Actually, the process starts in December. So number one, there was little to no increase in overall spending. We're trying to target as close to 2% as we can. Knowing the way things have gone recently, that is going to be significantly challenging. Just, you know, and we'll talk more about that. Number two, increased transparency and equity of spending practices. So instructional line spending is based on number of students in a building with an additional allocation for Title I schools, and those elementary schools are Mount Vernon, Wayne, and Reedfield Elementary Schools. We're trying to keep class sizes of 15 to 20 in the elementary school, 18 to 22 in the middle school, and then 10 or more at the high school level. And I know people panic a little bit when they see 10. Most of our high school classes have significantly more than 10, but in terms of trying to set up course loads and stuff, 10 is kind of our target number in order to be able to run a specific course. We also look very closely at positions that are not automatically filled when somebody leaves. So we are trying to pay attention to what our staffing looks like. We are doing all of these things because we don't want the budgeting process to become contentious between the towns and the districts. As part of the administrative team, we will continue to have meetings to discuss the factors affecting our budget, review requests as a team, and work towards achieving our overall goal. So as I said when I first started this presentation, it's something that would have happened last week. So they're presenting their initial budgets. So I'm gonna invite up Brand Remington, who is our Student Activities Director, and he will talk a little bit about co-in extracurricular additions to his budget. So Brand, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right, so you got this slide. I'm gonna read down what I have there on my sheet. I think the board members have a copy of what I have, and then you get the slides up there to look at. Requested increases for next budget. Asking for $500 for middle school athletic supplies. Reason being, the cost of equipment and stuff is rising as well as everything else. I'm requesting a $4,000 line for our middle school uniforms to set up a uniform rotation. When I started here almost three and a half years ago, every single middle school team was wearing hand-me-downs from high school. And as you ever seen the difference between high school and middle school kids, it's a huge difference in sizes. It was quite embarrassing. So I worked hard to find money in the last few years to get them proper uniforms, but those are only gonna last so long. So I'd like to establish a uniform rotation. $2,000 for co-curricular equipment to make improvements on the music and the theater department in the PAC at the high school. Like to add $4,100 roughly for our high school cross-country coach running. We currently have one servicing at least two dozen runners every fall. So 2018, we had 24 runners. 2019, we had 29. Last year, we had 24, and this past fall, we had 24. One coach for 24 runners running all over campus in the woods, in my mind, is not a safe practice, so I'm looking to add a second coach. $1,000 for high school athletics. $1,000 for high school athletic supplies, just like the middle school costs have risen. $650 for contracted services, which should go towards the athletic trainer to be able to cover the costs that football and lacrosse currently pays for out of their own pockets. $8,500 for a high school uniform rotation. And $10,000 for high school officials in order to pay for the officials in the football program and the girls' and lacrosse programs. The football program is pretty close to 50% funded. They have to pay for the sheriff for their home games, the officials on the field and the athletic trainer and all of their supplies. We only pay for the stipend and the transportation. So I'm looking to add money for officials to cover that. And our two lacrosse programs, girls and boys at the high school level, they pay for everything currently. We don't spend a dime on them. They have to fundraise all of their monies. So I'm looking to be able to fund those two sports. And decreases to offset some of those. Minus 100 for middle school dues and fees because there's a lot less dues and fees that are needed for middle school level. $300 for middle school contracted maintenance. That's for rentals of porta-potties. And skip down to high school, $1,100 for that. If you're not aware, the Awesome Bears Society worked really hard in the last couple of years to build indoor bathrooms down at the athletic facility. So we'll be able to save roughly $1,400 every year on rentals for portable toilets. $2,000 reduced on high school contracted services. That money was absorbed into dues and fees the last few years, so there's not a need for that. And $500 less in high school dues and fees in the co-curricular line just because there's a lot of programs that are happening online that we don't need to be spending the extra money to help offset. And just to add one more thing about the lacrosse, I got some numbers in case you're curious, how many students we service. But in the last four year, the boys' lacrosse program numbers have been 21, 21, 15 and 17. And the girls' lacrosse program, the last four years have been 24, 24, 20 and 24. And the girls' lacrosse program is our largest team in the spring. Yet we don't spend a single cent on that team. That's. That's my budget requests.
Are there any questions from the board? I do have one question, Brand. Is the lacrosse team just Marana Cook or is it other schools?
Currently, it's a co-op with Marana Cook and Winthrop. So Winthrop does the same thing. Winthrop doesn't spend any money. The players have to fundraise or pay a fee to play. I think boys' lacrosse, on average, they pay about $175 on top of their fundraising because their sport's a lot more expensive with all the padding and things. And the girls, it varies. They've spent anything from 100 to 125 to play.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Somebody was mentioning that the high school was maybe taking over some sports that were originally or in the past supported by boosters?
Yes, thanks for bringing that up, actually. Football, football has been under the Marana Cook Football Incorporated umbrella, which is basically from Pee Wee Youth all the way up to high school. They fundraise and supply the funding for the high school team. And the goal is if we can get these things added into the budget, the high school program could break away separate from the youth program, which is something that the youth program does want. And that way, the high school would have more control over some of the things that they use that money for. And also, we would be picking up the costs of, just like any other sport that we have during the season. Does that answer the question? Okay.
Your mic, microphone, please.
Was there money sent from that booster club that that is coming over to the high school in some fashion or that they used to have for football, except aside?
Because when you say boosters, it's kind of two groups. Is the Awesome Bears, is that the one you're referring to? Are you referring to Marana Cook Youth Football? Okay, Awesome Bears, they just, that is a per-player dollar amount. So that's based on concessions and stuff throughout the year. So that's a minimal based on per player. But the majority of the funding for the football program has been coming through the Marana Cook Football Separate Organization. So what they're trying to do is break away and just have Marana Cook Youth Football from eighth grade level down. And we're trying to take over everything with the high school program so that way we can give them their supplies and help them with the costs of everything. Yep.
Game?
The cost is, the deputy sheriff?
Yeah, $260 per game because you have to rent them for four hours.
Are you, are we required to have a law enforcement present or?
I don't think there's any set laws or requirements. It's very well needed.
It is.
Yeah, because if you've ever been to a football game for high school, it's a middle school dance. In other words, it's just, it's a lot of people running around and having him there is very helpful. We, I mean, we had a football game this past fall where I had four administrators and a sheriff and the five of us were busy. And none of us saw any of the football game because we had such a crowd, which is great because we had a, you know, a big crowd there and stuff, but.
Is the law enforcement doing law enforcement activities or is he doing administrative activities? What I mean, is he doing like, is he, is he taking the position of a teacher?
No.
Is he doing actual?
No, for example, if we had suspicion of a kid that, or an adult that was intoxicated or had a weapon or something like that, that's when they would take over, which would be totally different than if we were in our school building. Yeah, which if that happened at a school building, we'd be calling them anyway. So having them there is helpful.
Thanks.
Yep.
Does anyone online have a question? Any of the board members? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
So the next person I'm gonna invite up is going to be Kelly Thompson, who is our Transportation Director to talk about transportation requests.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for your support this year. It's been an exciting first year for sure. I'm gonna be going on and off with my glasses because I have the age. So. And but in doing this and looking at where we're at as a department and looking at safety, it does come at a cost. So I'm gonna, you know, go through this if you have any questions after we talk about it. So there is professional development line and it's, it's $9,000 increase and that is for CDL classes for new recruits. And with this, we are asking for a one-year commitment for them to work within our district. This has been instrumental this year in having any sort of success as we did have a great success with our Adult Ed CDL Bus Driving Course. So that would be an increase in cost. Drug and alcohol testing due to our increase in staffing this year and federal mandates and being compliant, there is a need for an increase for drug and alcohol testing. Tech supplies and software. We purchased a new software routing program and it has cards that each student will have. And those cards, I have a printer to be able to print new cards for new students coming into the district. And let's see, a supply of $5,200. And this is because last year we were down, we didn't provide the amount of transportation. We also didn't have as much servicing because we weren't traveling the distance. We didn't have all of our sports runs, field trips didn't go, those types of things. So our cost was down last year. This year, however, we're kind of feeling that because if you've ever, if you've tried to go get a part for a vehicle, it's expensive. Things have increased in cost, so we need to look at that with just maintenance fees going up. Equipment, $21,500. We need a new floor jack for our mechanic, also a new engine hoist. His is broken and he's bringing parts in from home to make it work when he needs it. We also need new radios and the bus radio is the biggest expense. We need new radios because I have buses that sit at Manchester Elementary School and I can't reach them on the radio. It's a huge safety concern and a safety issue. We're transmitting sometimes bus to bus. So I might have to call a bus in Reed Field that calls a bus in another place in Reed Field that relates to a bus in Manchester. So we really need new radio systems so we can be in contact with our buses in case of emergencies. With Traversa, that's our new online routing system. That is a $5,500 increase for that subscription. That hosts our Traversa, which is routing our Tyler Ride and our Ride 260. So with those components, that's a new fee for us. And also, last but not least, a new position to the department with an assistant for the Transportation Director. And really, with the increase of work that's happening with the clearinghouse, federal mandates for what we have to do for training, I really have had quite a few opportunities to hire bus drivers this year, but because we don't have the hours, we do have the need for this person as a support person. Right now, as we said, there's nobody if I'm out in that position. So it's really challenging. I was really just hoping that I did not get sick this fall because there was nobody to come in and do that. So it's just a real struggle. There is so much work that has to be done to remain compliant with state reporting and those type of things. So 20 hours a week would then give a bus driver, which we're already paying full benefits to, a full-time 40-hour-a-week position, which would really help with recruiting because right now, we offer 20 hours a week for our bus drivers and most places are offering 30 to 40. So it's hard with recruiting people. That's what I've been running into this year. Our benefits are really great. We have a great team. We have a great culture, but this would, I think, really help us to support our team and grow. And I think that's it. So if you have any questions for that.
Any questions from the board? Sweatboard?
You didn't want to leave it live, did you? That's a good thing when I have the mic. Couple of questions. First, the part-time position, is that include benefits or is this strictly part-time?
My, I would like to see that part-time position be a bus driver slash assistant.
Okay, so the benefits.
Already getting the benefit.
The benefits would come with the bus driver position. Okay. And then secondarily, your radio system. You operate high band, low band, and how does your network work?
So right now, we're off of the tower that I believe we rent from Reed Field Town. And we pay a fee for that plus then a monthly fee. And what the problem is with that is that there's not a transformer on the tower or repeater, I think it's called.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, repeater on the tower. So we are very limited to where we can go. So the buses are acting as repeaters from bus to bus. So even though I'm the base, I can't reach a lot of the buses if they're out on a, on a run, if you will, during the day. The new system is gonna work off a satellite. So therefore, if our buses were in Boston, we could reach them. The cost difference between looking at putting that transformer on that tower versus going with a new system is only about a $5,000 difference. But it doesn't guarantee that I'm gonna be able to reach a student in a bus in Wayne.
And I'm assuming when you go to a satellite, you're talking higher frequencies because they don't make low-band radios anymore?
Probably, yes. I don't know much about it. I just know what I can get for a benefit.
So you have a vendor who's gonna walk you through this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any board members online with any questions? Thanks, Kelly. I guess Tyler's on. Tyler?
With gas prices fluctuating the way they are, how are you adjusting the fuel account for that? Or are we anticipating the gas prices are gonna flat off around $4 to $5 a gallon?
Are you talking, are you asking about fuel costs and the increase?
Yeah.
Jay's gonna address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
I'm not gonna address that right this second, but I will talk about it as the presentation goes on. So Tyler, if I don't answer your question at that time, please remind me so that I do answer it, okay? I am going to tackle the miscellaneous cost centers for a couple of people that couldn't be here today. And then I'll also be inviting Steve Bost up as well for the Adult Ed. So I'm gonna skip around a little bit just to keep it simple and for time-wise. And I've got the best part. So we obviously have a health center that runs out of Marana Cook Community High School. There are no proposed additions to that budget. It will remain exactly where it is from last year to this year. And our professional development curriculum assessment line will also be exactly where it is this year. There will not be any changes or additions that would bring up those cost centers in any way. So having said that, I'm gonna pause for a minute and now invite up Mr. Steve Bost, who is our Director of Adult Education.
Thank you, Jay. So good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Bost. I am the Adult Ed Director. I'll just talk really briefly. As you can see, I have one slide, so pretty simple. One of the things I was requesting, if some of you might remember, have been on the board for a while. Couple of years ago, we actually started a CDL program here at the high school with some seed funds, then COVID hit. And so we have suspended that for a number of years, but I am looking to start it up again. I feel as though there's a whole segment of our student population who isn't planning to go to college. They're not planning on going to both technical or technical school. They're gonna leave here probably with just a high school diploma. And as a lot of you know, that's really tough these days. And so I want to equip those people with a little bit more education, a little bit more chance to make a livable wage. And I feel as though the CDL Truck Driving Program, given the need right now, which is extremely high, is a good way of being able to do that. I'm also gonna be talking a little later today about a grant that I've applied for. And if that grant goes through, I won't need the $30,000. So I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Also, I've made a couple of requests. One is for our CDL instructor, who's currently 20 hours to be full-time. And then also a request for a vehicle purchase. Over the last couple of years, I've amassed enough funds. Two years ago, I was, I had made over $31,000 over what I had asked for. Last year was $39,000. This year, starting in June, I probably made probably $40,000 to $50,000. So I've got plenty of money to make a vehicle purchase and to make my person full-time. I'm just asking board approval to expend those funds. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Switches. How'd I do, Bill? Ralph Eno Reed Field. One of the things that I know we've heard in our town from our shared ambulance service provider is the fact that we're also short qualified EMT and EMR people. I'm wondering whether or not, if not this year, but in out years, you might consider adding that to the CDL curriculum because I think there's also a living wage component there for folks that provide that service. And it is extremely likely to have that in our small rural communities.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board? Anybody that's online?
Tyler, again. Back to a new nap point. Have we also considered looking at providing more firefighter services? Because I know we're on Mount Vernon Fire Department, we're struggling to find qualified members. And I think having a program, partly the high school, would be another great addition to try and help get, you know, people that are looking to live in the community, on the training that they need to be certified firefighters.
So I, I know you're addressing that. I just want to let you know, Tyler, that that program is actually offered to the high school students through C A T C with our connection and actually have a program, the two-year program where they can come out. That's for our students. Obviously, that's not open to the community. So I think that's, you're kind of asking two questions there. One, does it happen for our students? And then two, is that something we could consider in the future potentially for adult ed? So again, I think that's a, a good request we can look into. There's a lot to making that come together. As Steve can attest, when it comes to getting the CD up and running, up to kind of expect that.
Any other questions, David?
Not a question as much, but just a thank you for your efforts to bring our students and our community things that will help them because that's part of all of our goal as we go. And you've been doing a wonderful job with that.
Sure, thank you. I feel like, I feel kind of bad because over the last couple of years, things have really, we've struggled so badly. Our enrichment programs have really kind of, well, basically collapsed. It's hard to have enrichment programs face-to-face when the buildings are closed and those types of things. And, and our, and our high set program has really gone downhill as well. But now you're seeing this huge need where these students are dropping out of school and not having a real plan to where they want to go next. And I think high set programs are going to be really viable. And I'm already seeing calls coming through. So I can see that that's going to grow dramatically next year. And we've already started our Richmond program back up. Hang with us. We'll be right back to where we were before in a couple of years.
We have no doubt about that, Steve. Thank you.
So a couple more miscellaneous cost centers. The next one is food service. And with food service, nobody's paying for lunch again this year. So that's something that's like, it's all taken care of. So the basic goal pre-pandemic was to make this program, its revenues and expenditures match with the basically free lunch for, for all. We've been able to manage that program just fine. It's working really, really well. However, the staff does need some equipment and some has been purchased previously through Esser funds. So I asked Jen Hall to give me a list of things. The, and this is kind of prioritized. So she would need at the high school level, a two-door refrigerator. We're going to need one regardless. That's kind of a must-have. So it's about $3,600 for one of those. Then the rest of the list is kind of prioritized as second, third, fourth, fifth, going down. So at the bottom are the things that are least important. And the high school refrigerator is kind of the must-have. So she also needs a two-door freezer at the high school. And she's looking to upgrade the salad bar at the high school as well. The middle school needs a chest freezer and a food processor. And you can see the cost there. I've already asked Jen to prioritize that as we're working through budget requests. We know what is her priority and what we may have to trim back. So we've already kind of had that conversation together as she put this request in. So for her, her big thing is if I have to get rid of everything else, I can make it last one more year, but I'm going to need to get the two-door refrigerator at the high school level. So that's why I kind of put that slide together the way I did. The next slide is our system administration slide. It's up almost $14,000 and that's due to the following things. The school board liability and insurance, we were told, is anywhere from 14% to a 23% increase. And the reason why we were told that is because, and I say school board liability insurance, that also includes your property and casualty. It's, the reason I was given was because of the high cost of materials if something has to be replaced. So we don't have a firm number yet. Obviously, we've estimated a little bit high and we can back that number down once we get the, the actual increase. But they did warn us it could be as high as a 23% increase. So worst-case scenario, and then we'll back it down. Dues and fa, dues and fees. The Maine School Management Association has upped their dues and fees this year. They haven't increased them in about four years. And this year, they decided to do that and all the superintendent said, you're killing us here. So it's one of those things that we don't have a whole lot of say about. And we absolutely use their services quite a bit in the schools. We're looking to upgrade two computers in our office, at the central office. And then, just like everyone else, we do have a couple of online subscriptions that we're using Zoom for remote and virtual meetings. And then DocHub, which is another version of DocuSign. A lot of you guys have probably seen that. We are using that much more than we've ever used it in the past. And I don't see us changing going forward with that. So it's up about $14,000 for those, for those reasons. The, I think, before I get to the ED 279, the last section is the debt space purchases. So that line is up about $8,700. The facilities bond that we passed three years ago, we're obviously in a payback. We're in payback mode at this point. So we're paying year three of 15. We have two, we've been approved for two new buses at the state level. So the other buses have been paid off. We have one bus that's completely paid off and the mini bus has been paid off this year. Interesting note, we got a quote on a bus. Both of the buses not too long ago. And we were told about $100,000. About a week ago, we got notified that the cost had gone up 15%, which brings it to $115,000 for a bus. So again, costs are rising dramatically and we're trying to cover those in the budget going forward. And then, of course, we're paying year 20 of 20 for the high school renovation that was completed a while ago, obviously, but it's year 20 of 20. So the principal and one interest payment is left for next year for that particular renovation fund. So I'm going to pause there for a minute because that's, again, a lot of information. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer. I'll do my best. Oh, Betty's got one. Betty?
Going back to food service.
Yes.
Are those prices for the freezer and the refrigerator locked in?
They are not locked in. Those are estimates at this point, but we use.
I just bought one. I just bought a two-door freezer and it was $7,000.
Oh, boy. So I will ask Jen to double-check on if those prices have changed. I will absolutely do that. Thank you for telling me that. Yeah. Yes, please.
On the free lunch for all?
Yes.
For that, is that for school year 23?
That's, they are working on an amendment for school year 23. We're all waiting to find out if that's going to go through or not. But that's on the table. We just haven't heard if it's passed yet or not, but it's on the table.
I thought free lunch for all was maybe a COVID-related change? Is that not true?
Yeah, it, I think it was, is how it all came down. But I think they're seeing that, obviously, there's going to be effects from COVID and the pandemic going for several years. So I think they're looking to do that as another way to ease the, you know, the, the burden on the schools and the taxpayers as well. Can't promise anything, but I know it's on the table at the federal level, so.
Okay, do we get, that's what I was wondering. Do we get state or federal coverage of that?
Yes, yeah, that's, as soon as we know, we'll absolutely let you guys know because that would be another savings for us. So thank you for asking that.
Are there any other questions from anyone that's online?
Okay. Okay, so I have one more part of my presentation that I'm going to give right now. And it's about the ED 279, which is how the state funds schools. So I wanted to give you guys some basic information and then we'll make sure everyone has this and it's posted online because I put in a bunch of links so that people could follow up and do a little bit more research. We could literally spend three hours just going over this. It's a very complicated formula. So I'm trying to do it as simply as possible and I'm going to be very honest in saying, going into my fourth year, I'm still nowhere near an expert on this formula. But hopefully, I can give you the basics and point you in the direction to get more information. So the ED 279 is broken up into five different parts. The first part is their essential program and service rates. This is based on student count. And it includes your staff, benefits for staff, as well as support staff. The second part of the ED 279 is your operating cost. It's based on subsidizable pupils and it goes from pre-K right through elementary school, middle school, and high school. It also includes your operating costs for adult education, disadvantaged youth, and things like English language learners as an example. Section three is your, excuse me, is your allocations for gifted and talented, special education, transportation. Schools are required to give a contribution for retirements. And then, of course, debt service, like I just covered in the presentation. Section four is the calculation they use, they use for the required local contribution by municipalities. So again, that's why the select board is here right now, is because they're very curious as to what is their contribution expected to be. And then, of course, the final one is section five, which is basically your totals and adjustments. The only adjustment we have in that is membership in a regional service center that we share with RSU 2 and Winthrop. And that's really the only adjustment that we get. And it's, it's very minor in the grand scheme of things for us. So a couple of snapshots, a little bit more information. So this is the snapshot that's on the page that talks about enrollment of attending students. So all students that come to Moranoke pre-K through 12, they are included in this calculation. The only students that are not included in this calculation from the state, remember, this is the state side of things, are those students that come here on tuition because the money follows the student. So when we have superintendent requests, they are included in this. They are counted towards our subsidizable student costs there. But again, the only students not included are those that are coming through on tuition agreement, like, for example, our Fayette students. We have an agreement with Fayette, so Fayette pays us for their students to come here and they do that annually. Any other student that's coming here tuition, we bill their town for them coming. But they are not included in the calculation at the state level. So again, they use a two-year rolling average for this. So they understand, especially in the pandemic, schools have gone up and schools have gone down. So what they're doing is that they take 2020 and 2021 to determine what is our student count for 2022. So it's a two-year kind of rolling average. For us, that meant that we were down 11 students because of that calculation. Just so you know, again, that's just the state side of this. The second part of this is valuation. What is it cost to live in our communities that go here? So each town, you look at the evaluation, or excuse me, the valuation, I always say that wrong, of resident students only. So now superintendent agreements, tuition agreements, those are all out the window. So for example, if we have a Winthrop student that's, that comes here on a superintendent agreement, they are not counted in this calculation. So no town is ever paying for somebody else's student from another town or district. So that's going to be on page four and five, the local contribution. In 2122, the expected mill rate was 7.26. In this new budget, the expected mill rate is 7.1 from the town. So it has decreased coming from the town. But the really bad news is, on the next slide, is state evaluation, state valuations. We have to use what the state has provided and they update this every single year. So what you see on this slide is valuations for 22 for this school year. And again, all students are put in their correct town when it comes to this piece of the puzzle. So if we have a Reed Field student who's going to Wayne, for whatever reason, we actually count the Reed Field student in Reed Field. We don't take that Reed Field student and count them in Wayne as an example. So students within, it's only students that are physically in our district in one of our towns that we use here. Superintendent agreements don't affect this. Tuition doesn't affect this, okay? So all of our towns for 22, and this is really hard to swallow, all towns have seen between a 12% and a 15% property valuation increase. So one of the things I want to say to the board is even if we came in at zero taxes at the town level, putting it back on the town, and I don't mean to do that, but like, even if we were zero, taxes are going up. So depending on what happens at the town level. So I, I want to, you know, say that going forward. So it, this is obviously, we had our auditor here. This makes it a challenge for us going forward. There's no doubt about it. So again, a little bit more information. So how do we figure out the local share of this budget? So we have 50% student count, 50% valuation. We use a rolling three-year average per the RSU 38 agreement that was put into place. So in the end, the state contribution is up. We're getting about $363,000 more from the state than we did last year. And that number, and I guess I want to, I want to throw a little bit more out here just for you guys to think about. Remember last year when we built the budget? We weren't being funded at 55%. So this number is before the 55% is actually added in from last year. This is based on our first budget, when we passed it, before we got the additional from the state to bring us up to 55% funding from them. So we see $363,000, but in reality, it's actually less than that. This is just based on the original budget that was approved by the board and approved by the voters. So there, there's a lot at play here for, you know, very obvious reasons. So the next slide that I have for you guys, and again, we'll make sure this is posted online, is I wanted to make sure, because this is a very complicated subject, that there was as much information about the essential program and services model as we could get to you. So the state has produced a really nice, simple YouTube video. They also have a funding graphic up there. I put the link for the valuation, so you can go directly and take a look at it. The ED 279 is also a public document. So the link for this year and previous year's 279 is there, as well as some resources about funding and about essential schools and services model here. So, so that's the end of the ED 279. So before I go into my last piece, I want to pause. So before I go into my last piece, I wanna pause for a second. And again, I'm going to paraphrase, I'm gonna say this right up front. I am not an expert, but I will try to answer questions and if I can't find, if I don't know it, I will find the answer and get it to you. We'll jot down any questions anybody has. So let's pause for a minute. Again, there's a lot of information there. Anyone, any questions? All right, then let's jump to the fun stuff next then, which will be, Mandy and I keep talking about sticker shock right now. So let me see, I wanna talk to you guys about, and I may have gotten, oh, right here, there it is. So yep, Donna's gonna pass out budget changes, a budget summary of changes that were made to the budget. It's a whole packet of papers. I'll walk you through it. I'll wait just a moment for her to be able to pass those out and then I'll talk about the changes and then we'll get to the discussion part. Everyone got a copy? Okay, so from last time we met, we have removed some things based on information and discussions I had with administrators, with various board members, and obviously with Mandy as our finance director. So the top, I know we're really worried about positions in this district. So one of the things that we looked at was some of those initial requests that wore four positions. We're going to not ask for those positions. In conversations with the administrators, they feel like they're in a position where they can kind of make do with what they have based on their enrollments. So I'm not gonna go through all of those because they're listed out for you. The high school requests that you had seen, what I did is I went back to the high school teams and said, for example, they were asking for 10 electronic balances for science. I said, you need to put that in your regular budget and as a team, you're going to need to decide, do I get 10 scales or do I get two scales this year and two scales next year on down the line? Just like we have to budget at home, I'm asking the teachers to budget and prioritize what they're doing. So all of those things that you see there, I put back on those teams, said if you want them, you need to put them in your allocated money and you need to kind of work through that process going forward. That amounted to, as you can see, a little over $338,000. Looking at positions in the district, we've elected to eliminate the district-level literacy specialist and the district-level math specialist. And we have a retiring high school teacher. That comes out to be $200,000 savings going forward. I've worked closely with Dr. Karen Smith about our systems and processes to make sure that if we are eliminating those, that literacy and math specialist, that we have a good process going forward and that we have the resources and the processes in place to make sure that no students fall through the cracks, so to speak. But again, we're trying to look at efficient use of resources and where can we save the greatest amount of money? In our ESER funds, we had three positions that we questioned whether we would continue or not. At this point, I'm gonna recommend that they not be funded going into next year. That's the elementary guidance position, the high school ed tech position, high school technology ed tech position, and then our COVID nurse. We had a nurse that was basically dedicated to COVID. Still busy, still doing things. I don't want anyone to think they're not, he's not doing anything right now. But I think we're getting to a place where we probably won't need a dedicated, specific COVID nurse. So those positions weren't even put in the budget, so obviously that's why there's no number there at this time. The things that I am recommending we keep in the budget and we'll continue having conversation around at this time include a nurse for Mount Vernon and Wayne. We are going to have some leftover funds in ESER too. And I recommend we rewrite our grant to be able to pay the nurse and that would mean that we would only need about $16,000 to have another dedicated nurse for Mount Vernon and Wayne going forward at least one more year. One of the positions I feel very strongly about is the shared social worker for the elementary schools. That's a position some people were asking. So I went to a licensed social worker and asked her to write me a brief explanation because I know that was a question, so I'm gonna read that to you from her right now. So a licensed clinical social worker, their acronym is LCSW, may provide more intensive focus to individual smaller groups of students who are presenting with more significant mental or emotional challenges. These students may show improved functioning with a more specialized support for either the short or long-term goal. This even helps alleviate some of the work of a social, excuse me, of a school counselor and think at the elementary level, a guidance counselor who is charged with an all-student focus, who may not feel like they have the expertise programming, excuse me, may not have the expertise programming, classroom programming, but feel pulled to those students who struggle. As a result, a social worker is trained and able to see a student more long-term. This is particularly important if there is no outpatient school-based mental health provider in the school, such as Kinebec Behavioral Health. An LCSW is trained to fill this role, where a school counselor is trained to provide whole-class lessons, short-term and less intensive emotional support. We have really good structures in place at the middle and high school. I've had many conversations about this. We actually have Kinebec Behavioral Health Services that really does a great job servicing our middle school and our high school. Our elementary schools don't have that support. KBH, they're doing a great job for us, but they don't really provide what we need at the elementary school. And frankly, and this is against them, frankly, they don't have the, they don't have the personnel to provide what we need. A lot of times, like I'm gonna use Reed Field in Manchester, I would be surprised if they've even seen one of the KBH counselors this year. It's that kind of, it's really, really intense right now. So I think a social worker who can provide this at the elementary school and it would be a service that's provided for students who are not eligible for other resources. So like, think your special ed, your 504, a lot of them already get those things. But we have a population of students that need a support that don't quote-unquote qualify for those supports. So a social worker would allow us to be able to address that population of students in our elementary schools going forward. So I wanted to kind of share that with you. Textbooks for science and Spanish. Science is looking to cover two different classes and the Spanish is looking to cover one of their classes. One of the questions that came up is, are these print resources or are they digital resources? And the answer pretty much all the way across is they're both. There is going to be a textbook, but there is a digital online component that is updated every year. So that way textbooks are, you know, they don't fall behind with whatever's going on. So wanted to answer that. I've got more information if you want to do that, but I won't do that right now. But I can talk individually if need be. The middle school and high school database subscription is $5,100. It is a little pricey, but I wanna shout out to Liz Gil May, who has done a fantastic job of rejuvenating our high school library. And she is making sure it's being used and that for me is the biggest thing. I don't wanna pay for something that's not being used and she is making sure that service is being used and being used well and often. So I'm giving her credit for that and I wanna continue to advocate for that. In the industrial arts lab, he's got a laser etcher that was purchased last year. But when we purchased it, we didn't really know exactly what needed to be done. It needs a fume extractor in order to be able to be used in the high school level. So we need, we have a piece of equipment that we paid for, it's just sitting in the industrial arts lab, not being used. So I wanted to get used, we're, we need to get that fume extractor in over the summer so that piece of equipment can be used. Then Tyler, this I think will answer your question. There are several things we're waiting on that are basically out of our control. Electricity costs, as everyone knows, those have gone up dramatically. We have heard that we potentially might be budgeting a 40% increase on electricity costs. Again, that's not set in stone. That's like worst-case scenario. So Mandy is reviewing our supply contract so that we can get a better estimate on what we're really going to need for an increase in that line because we do have a contract with the supply provider. So she's working on that. And again, that, as everyone knows, with energy, it's a little bit of a moving target. Diesel and propane, so we don't use any oil. We use diesel for our buses and we use propane in our schools for heat. So again, we're checking with Down East on the propane cost. We budgeted for 15%. Again, worst-case scenario, people are saying there's a lot of volatility and you may want to look at a 50% increase. Again, that's not what we've got budgeted, but that's just something that we're hearing as we're trying to put this together. I was at a superintendent's meeting and heard that and all of the superintendents basically, like, our eyes popped out of our heads when they said that because it wasn't what we were, we were working on. So we're, we're looking at our contracts and of course it is, do we lock in now? And then maybe prices fall or do we wait? Wait it out, see what happens and lock in later? So again, it's a little bit of a roll of the dice and I'm certainly not in the commodities market. So we're trying to do as much research as we can about ways that we can mitigate those costs going forward. And then the last thing that is on this is we are going to have a facilities committee meeting next week. We've got about $86,000 left in our bond. We are, I'm working with Sean Drinkwater. We're gonna bring a recommendation to the facilities committee and we will look to spend that remaining $86,000 based on what projects will have a 15-year life and we could get done this year because that, we have until September to spend that money. So we're at the end of spending that money and we wanna make sure we get our use out of it because we know that was a big ask. So we wanna make sure we take care of as much as possible. So that was the budget summary, changes that we made that should have been presented last week. So again, I apologize for that. The, in that packet, the second page, I put in just as a reference for everyone so that you could see what the yearly comparison looks like for property valuations. And I've already talked to you a little bit about that, but if you look at the, it would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. If you go to the ninth column over from the left, you'll see the percent change there for this one year. And then right next to that, you'll see the seven-year comparison. Property values have gone up significantly this last year. And if you've bought a house or sold a house, you are very aware of what, what the market looks like right now and that's what drives a lot of valuation going forward. The next page over, and then I promise I'm almost done and I'll, just a lot of information. The next page over is the district proration for residents only so that you can see how it breaks out percentage-wise to the each of the towns. And again, using that rolling three-year average, I'm not gonna read that all to you. I'll let you kind of digest it on your own going forward, but I thought it would be good. And again, you can see the, how it's kind of calculated going forward there, okay? So we're now up to page four, the sticker shock one. So this is the second draft based on all the changes we've made up to this point. So you can see it's broken out by the different schools and obviously district-wide facilities, transportation. And then everyone gets thrown off by that a little bit as far as elementary. So that's something that applies to all four schools and it's not just a single school. So that's why you see that elementary line at the very bottom. And again, most people run to the very bottom, the grand total line. So if you go all the way over, you'll see that we are currently at 7.99, which is about a million and a half dollars increase from last year. Again, this is the second draft. We are not done. So again, I know you get a little bit of a heart palpitation when you see that, but we are not done yet. We have a significant amount of changes that are also going to be coming forth next week as well. So we are working on it, I promise. That is not gonna be the final number there as far as increase goes. Then the next page is the first look at the revenue areas, again, a first draft. Obviously, as we work with the budget, we will have to revise this as well. And again, I'm not gonna read all of this because again, we could, we could be here until midnight and I don't want that to happen. But you can see, there is one thing I wanted to point out. Oh, I can't find that, so don't worry about it right now. Oh, maybe it's here. It is here! So on the very top line, in that middle column that says INC and DEC, increase or decline, in that first round, when you look at that million dollars that's there, that's your, obviously that's your difference that we're looking at from one year to the next based on ED 279. And then again, with the governor's proposal going to 55%, we just wanted to make sure you saw that that last year amounted to that amount of money going forward. And the last thing I wanted to point out was on the balance forward for 2223, that is not set in stone yet. That is an estimated number at this point. In a month, a month and a half, we will have a better, probably more accurate number at that point. But that's an estimated number at this point in the year. So I wanted to make sure that you guys saw that going forward as well. And then the very last page, again, a first draft of the local contribution and what it means to each individual town going forward based on the formula, the money that we have from the ED 279. And if the, if we were presenting tonight, this is what it would look like. Again, these numbers will change, but we wanted to give everyone kind of a look forward as to what this looks like, at least at this point. So there is a whole lot of information there and a lot of it is a moving target. One of the last things I wanna say, and I must sit down and try to answer questions with Mandy's help, hopefully. I am concerned because we've got basically three pieces going forward that we are going, that we are struggling with. Obviously, the first one, as I talked to you guys about, was energy costs really, really worry me right now. The second thing that, again, we'll have very little control over is the cost to insurances and liability insurance, et cetera. We have not gotten, usually we get, we get a heads up as to what the increase for health insurance might look like. We've got nothing so far. So that really worries me and kind of indicates that. So that really worries me and kind of indicates that it may be higher than it usually is this year. And again, that's just, you know, we don't have any control over that. So that's the other thing. And then the third thing that we have happening this year, um, which I know is no secret to anyone, is we are in the midst of teacher negotiations with our professional staff. So um, so we have three kind of really big unknowns at this point that we are trying to navigate when it comes to this budget. So, and again, that's a process we're working through. Um, and the association um, is working with us on that as well, but we don't have anything nailed down yet. So it, it's a process. So um, with that, I'm going to step away. Let the board start discussing and talk with our select people. And again, please go, guys, please don't shoot me. I know those numbers look really bad right now. They're not going to stay that way. I promise. Okay?
So do we have questions or discussion from the board? Dave?
Yeah, I got one question on the uh, the energy. You know, I, you said, you know, we could, right now, because we could uh, can you think, uh, lock ourselves into a price right now. There's no program for school. I think that's unfair for a school. To be locked into a price, you know, because we know it's going to go down. I really do believe it's going to go down. But you want to make that budget right now and lock it in. But there's no special program for energy for school.
Yeah, I know. That's hard to swallow, isn't it?
It's, it's very hard to swallow.
And we don't have to lock in right now. It's really up to us when we choose to go out to bid.
Yep.
Um, but obviously it's a, it's a gamble.
Any other board questions or comments? Dane?
I don't know if this is the place for it, but um, as far as not hiring those four teachers, the Manchester Elementary School to middle school and high school. How is that going to overall have an effect on either each individual school? Is a teacher going to have to?
So um, as far as I, I'll use like the Manchester one just because that's at the top. So I talked to Abby about that. Um, and she, um, and what we did is we looked at enrollments and what that means going forward. Um, I also talked to Mr. Boston about that as well. Mr. Boston had the class. Um, that's a little bit smaller and split this year. Um, so if push comes to shove, we could combine that class. Smaller class and split the bigger class in, in Manchester. Um, and of course we follow our contractual um, obligations when it comes to moving a teacher. So, um, but that was like, I talked all of that over with them to make sure that they were supportive of that before I brought it forward.
It's like, you mean like another teacher from a different grade slide down?
It's very possible, yeah, from a different school. Yeah, yeah. At the elementary level, right? It wouldn't be like a middle school teacher going down to teach like first grade. That wouldn't happen. Yeah. That's a good question. Thank you for asking that.
Can I just get for that same question, but just give me a, a number. So Reed Field has, I don't know how accurate, twenty-five versus Manchester. That's thirty-two or how big of a difference are we talking?
As far as class size?
Yeah. Um, For the class that you were referring to.
So right in, if all holds true, that Reed Field class, I believe in. If I speak wrong, Mr. Boston, please feel free to correct me. I believe it would be either thirteen or fourteen if we combined it. Nope. What? Would, okay. I don't know if I'm looking at the right class then. Um, so yeah. But I know um, it would be below our thresholds that I gave in the directive. So um, we won't have a class, like what we always said is if we hit twenty-one at an elementary level, we look to split the class up. So if we stay at twenty, then we'd be fine. And if Manchester goes above and it's like a twenty-three, then we'd have to split the class. So um, going from there. So, yeah. And right now, um, Mr. Boston has two teachers at every level. And Abby, correct me if I'm wrong, you've got, I think it's, two levels with one teacher at this point. Yeah. Thank you. Patty?
First of all, I would just want to say, um, Jay, thank you and thanks to all of the administrators that have worked with you. Because the second draft is really a lot different than the first draft. So I know there are shocking numbers and all that stuff, but it's huge. It's a huge difference already. So thank you for all the work to get to that. And I had a question about the nurse position that you talked about a while ago. And I understand that the COVID nurse that came with the Esser monies is not in the budget or is not. It, we were talking about it not continuing, but I, I wasn't clear then on what you meant about um, the nurse for Mount Vernon and Wayne for, with a grant and sixteen thousand dollars in one more year. And I wondered if you could explain a little bit more about that. Is, I guess my question really is, does that mean the equivalent of what the nurse is now would continue?
Yes. Um, so what we would do is we have about fifty-four thousand in the Esser from a few projects that will not get spent. And the Esser funds are, if you don't spend it, you lose it. Um, and we would have one more year to spend those Esser funds. So what I would do is take all of that money that, that hasn't been spent in other projects. Write a project that includes that, taking that leftover money and funding the nurse for one more year. But we would need a little bit money, a little bit more money from the regular funds or the regular budget to finish that um, salary for the year. So we could pay for about fifty-four thousand um, out of the Esser fund. And then we would probably need about sixteen thousand more for salary and benefits um, for the final year. So it means about a sixteen thousand dollar increase um, to be able to fund that. But the majority is funded by Esser. Does that make sense, Patty? If I'm not explaining it?
Yes. No, that totally makes sense. Thank you for clarifying that.
Tyler?
Great idea.
Sorry Patty, if I can finish. Tyler?
Um, this isn't so much, it's more of a long-term planning solution for energy. Um, has the, this has ever done a design study to move to solar energy? I know it'd be very massive expense upfront. Um, but have we done?
Thank you. Tyler, we're having a really hard time understanding what you're saying. I'm not sure. We're going to have to repeat what you just said. So we can't really understand you. Kim and Tyler?
We may have lost.
He was talking about doing a, a study. Energy study.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're talking to a paper towel.
He was talking about long-term energy, something about long-term energy.
He was talking, he said, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's better.
Um, so my question is, have we ever done a design study to see if the district is able to transition to a solar energy that would cut us off from the grid? I, I'm not saying like this for this year, but more looking long-term. Um, if we're looking at increasing energy costs, if this may be a solution to help um, with future budgets?
Yeah. So we've never actually done a study like that, Tyler. But we have had contact with several um, different people who have reached out about solar. We have never really pursued it. Um, I do think as a facilities committee, knowing what's going on with um, energy costs right now. Now's an ideal time to, to um, to re- renew and review those things. Um, uh, for example, the most recent one was Revision Energy. Did a presentation for the facilities committee. We had a lot of questions. Um, I asked her if she would just kind of, we're not saying no, but we're not saying yes. And can we come back to you when we're ready? So um, we will discuss again and we might be at a point where we're actually ready to have a longer conversation about that. Um, but good question, Tyler, because that's really what we're looking at. All of the companies we've talked to in the last couple of years have been around solar power. So um, I definitely think it's something we're going to have to take a look at, a harder look at going forward.
Any other questions from the board? Kim?
Um, I'm just curious for the shared social worker, um, how it's going to be determined where that individual goes and who's going to determine the need. Uh, it sounds like it's based on need.
Yeah, it kind of would be so, uh, kind of in a little, we haven't totally fleshed it out yet. But one of our basic idea was we have two elementary school um, guidance counselors. So we have that social worker and those guidance counselors rotate through the schools. So on any given day, there would only be one school, not like that didn't have that service. But at the same time, if it was an emergency situation, we'd be able to like move that social worker over to be able to help address those emergency situations that come up. Um, so a lot of it has to do with uh, building that team capacity with the uh, guidance counselors.
The only question I'd have with that is based on the description that you gave, it sounds like they're two very different roles. So, but the way that they would rotate, it sounds like they would almost be filling similar roles, which doesn't quite make sense.
Well, most of the elementary school guidance counselors are actually in classrooms. So that's one of the things that is challenging for them is they may have a student that has needs of some kind. But they really can't get to them because they're expected to be with a class of fifteen, fifth graders right now. Um, so that's like, what we would do is build that team. So that when the social worker is over there, they can give that targeted work or support to that particular student that may need it. So it's more about coverage and making sure that there's someone who has access to a higher level of supports than a guidance counselor does. And I would invite any, any of the elementary um, principals, if you'd like to talk on this. Cause I know we haven't totally fleshed it out, but if I'm on the wrong track or misspeaking, please feel free to jump in.
I'm, I'm not arguing that it's necessary. I'm saying it's very necessary. It's just that I'm curious how you're going to best utilize a person.
Absolutely.
Has a different, is supposed to have a different role.
Well, each year, each half year, each trimester, we don't exactly know the needs of our children. Say we have a loss of a parent, which we did this year in Manchester. Um, so sometimes children need short-term services. Um, and the guidance counselor could provide a triage, triage type of treatment for students. Just go in and assess what are their needs? Can we solve this and help them short-term? Put other support systems in place for them, as well as doing the regular classroom. They do a lot of our SEL. They do a lot of the identify feelings, identify, you know, how to be a anti-bully programs, um, can be an up standard type thing. The social worker would come in and do the longer, more extensive work with students and families. They often, much more often reach out and connect with the families. They would meet with the student every month. Guns council, I mean, every week, guidance counselors typically might meet three times with a student. Um, but a social worker would probably meet with a child every week when they're able to and make frequent connections with the family. Just to see if there are ongoing services that a family needs. Um, maybe case management, maybe, you know, resources, paperwork completed and things like that. So they really serve a different role. And we have met that need through KVBH in the past, having, you know, contracted services with them. They rarely access some main care or other, other funding sources. We just provide a facility for them. And there is a stipend that we can use for co-pays and things built in the budget. Um, but KVBH has not been able to provide us any social workers. I've got, I have a list of kids with needs and I have one social worker that comes in weekly and one that comes every other week, but fluctuating days and such. And that's a person that's in an internship program. So we are using an intern to really, you know, meet the needs of this particular student. I have more students that I would like to refer to social work services through KVBH, but they don't have a person for us. And I don't believe there are other agencies. I think we've looked and talked to other agencies, but um, they're not able to fill their positions. Thanks, Abby. Thank you. Any other questions? Are there any questions from the select people?
Thank you for having us once again. I appreciate that. Catherine Mills-Whitson from Reed Field. I have four things. It's always easy. You can count down when I'm getting finished. Um, so first, um, the Miranda Cook food, food program is like the best anywhere. And I think the request for the equipment is a very nominal amount. It should definitely be put into the budget. On the bus radios, I don't even think that's up for discussion. It's a safety issue and they should just be there. It just doesn't make any sense not to have that kind of communication. It's a different world we live in than when we went to school. Um, so a lot of support there. Uh, girls lacrosse, to me, that is just completely unacceptable that they're not being funded. Uh, it's a girls-boy thing. It's a sport that has a lot of participation and they're not getting funded. And any, to bring down that cost for each student, I think is very valuable. And it sends a real message to girls, um, talking about social workers and issues that kids have. This just reinforces a lot of those negative things and uh, a small contribution is better than nothing. Um, really funding them would be the best way, but then that gets to the last point. Can you explain, and I'll sit down for that. Um, how do we go from the seven point nine nine on the general fund summary page to the eleven point six one on the local dollar page? So I know that it's the allocations for the towns and it takes in all the formula approaches. But I'm just wondering why there is a almost four percent difference there. Thank you.
Okay, good.
So it's on the last page is the eleven point six. Over here.
So we're going to try to team this. This is where we, where we miss Bridgette right now.
And that's okay.
Try to tag team each other here.
If it's all just the formula, that's an okay explanation. But is it really an eight percent or is it really an almost twelve percent? That's what I'm really trying to get my head wrapped around here. Thank you.
So the way that it works is the, the actual, our actual budget is going up eight percent. But because of the way the formula works and the amount that you have to raise, plus the local additional dollars that we need to actually fund this budget, the two together is what ends up the amount that you see for the eleven point six. You're welcome. And also just to comment on the girls lacrosse, we're not funding the boys lacrosse and not the girls lacrosse. Just so you know, it's not in uh, funding. Yeah, we're not funding the boys and not the girls. We don't fund either lacrosse team. And that's because it was started as a club and it just hasn't moved to that.
Yeah.
Area yet.
We're working on it.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments from the select people?
I, I actually wanted to address a, a point about the, the current year budget and the unexpended bond proceeds that you have available uh, for facilities work. Um, I'm the road commissioner in the town of Reed Field as well, and we've had some, some issues um, on South Road, uh, near the Reed Field Elementary School. Uh, and, and they've been around for a while, uh, but the COVID um, situation has certainly made, you know, queuing traffic and turning traffic. Um, you know, much more of an issue. And um, I, I did have the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Drinkwater and Mr. Boston to have a preliminary discussion about some of the things we can do on the municipal side to help that situation. Also, uh, some things that may be able to be done at the facility. Uh, we have a speeding problem on South Road that has nothing to do with the elementary school. Uh, so uh, that, that's a separate issue, but um, I, I think that having, having vehicles turning, having vehicles tealing up uh, in a situation where we have, you know, a, a speed, um, a speed issue is, is a bit of a, of a, of a problem for us. And um, I don't think that there's um, uh, I think maybe twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars for a parking area at Reed Field Elementary School, uh, would go a very long way towards uh, helping to resolve a safety issue there. Uh, we are working to increase our signage and perhaps even putting some traffic calming in on South Road uh, to do what we can on the municipal side. And I'd like you to very much consider uh, taking some action on, on the parking uh, side. We um, have some staff in our, in a, a town that are skilled, uh, and I'm working on a proposal um, for you to consider. Uh, that would show, you know, potentially where that might go, what the, the scope of materials might be and even the potential costs. So um, I just ask you please to consider that and uh, thank you for, for doing so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Boston and Mr. Absolutely. Thank you, Eric. Uh, Mr. Boston and Mr. Drinkwire have both talked to me about that. So it's definitely on the table and we thank you very much for your support with that.
Um, so Jay, you said the teacher negotiations hasn't even come to a close yet.
It's not, we are not done yet.
I can't even imagine how that's gonna go. And that's, I guess, the big question is if it's going up eleven percent or the teachers getting a share of that. Um, can't imagine that's gonna be easy. A lot of our young adults and high school students are working at fast food restaurants for outrageous salaries and you've got dedicated teachers coming out with a lot of heart and soul wanting to educate our students. And then they increase, then the people that have been there forever, it's good luck with that. I can't even imagine. Um, the question I had was with the math and literacy specialists. Are those folks that work directly with this, the struggling students or are they more like the hierarchy that's running the programs?
They are more like the hierarchy that's running the program. Yep.
Thank you.
And um, I'll just say, um, Dr. Karen Smith has been instrumental in helping us ferret that out to have a more efficient system running. And that's one of the reasons why we brought this, this request forward um, with that. So thank you for asking that.
Thank you. I know the struggling students, you gotta catch them young or if you don't catch them. Um, and one more thing, ARPA funds, which we call ARPA funds with the education, I don't know if that had to do with Patty's question or maybe I didn't hear that. Are all of those expenditures used up and did the teachers get any of those from the federal grants we had?
Right. So we had the CR, the two CRF grants, which were basically for uh pandemic-related whatever. And then the Essar funds, the ARP funds. So the ARP funds, we have expended some of them. They uh, we have until twenty twenty-four with those.
Okay.
The Essar one we use for the nurse um, at Mount Vernon and Wayne. So that one's used up because it has to be used up this year. And then the Essar funds are the same way. Oh, this, excuse me, the Essar two have to be finished by next year, uh, September twenty twenty-three. So those are almost gone and that's where I was using that fifty-four thousand to fund another nurse for Mount Vernon and Wayne. Um, so we still have money mostly in the Essar three funds um, going forward. Um, so yeah.
Do we know how much is in that residual?
Know off the top of my head, but I can get you that amount.
And one very last question, the eighty-six thousand, was that part of a bond and what, does it have to be used just for capital improvements?
Yes, that was the fifteen dollar facility fund uh, or bond that we passed my first year here. Um, and yeah, it's gotta be used for the facilities. Um, and we try to capture anything that's going to have, that's going to outlive the life of the bond, which is fifteen years. So.
If I can, this is a silly request, but the ladies' um restroom in the high school outside of the gym is horrendous. It's with visiting families to our sports and to our theater scene. And the sinks don't work and the stalls don't lock and it's, it's awful. So just plug for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi there, Eric Kristauski, Wayne Town Manager. Um, one of the things that we um, were able to achieve is in some savings in the last year was a LED, converting our LED, um, a shoe lights to LEDs. And uh, we were able to save about eighty to ninety percent in savings. I mean, there was obviously a cost to do that. Um, but maybe you can use some of that bond savings with your parking lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else online have any uh questions? Are there any citizens comments at this time?
Um, Select Four, thank you guys so much for being here. It's great to see you guys. And please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions moving forward. Uh, please give me a call, um, email. Um, set up a meeting. Uh, Mandy and I are always more than happy to, to try to answer any questions about our budget moving forward. And I thank you guys very much for being here.
Yes, thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate your time. I'd also like to just, uh, the administrators, if you would like to stay, you can, but if you would like to leave, it's okay if you all leave also.
Sorry, Diane.
So the next thing on the agenda is deliberations, follow-up and decision-making. So I'm just gonna ask Jay, what do you need from us now?
Um, I, at this point, um, I have a list. Um, I brought my list in. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I've got about eight things that I'm still working on. Um, and I will bring um, a revision back to you on March twenty-three of next week. And then I will bring kind of the hard questions I was to deliberate on. Um, because I'd really, uh, I'm gonna say publicly, my goal is to try to get us somewhere around that five percent range before we have to start making deeper cuts than that. Um, so I've got about five different, uh, excuse me, eight different things that are kind of hanging out that we'll make adjustments to. Um, and then I'll move forward with you guys and I'll bring a list of questions saying this is the guidance we need at this point going forward from the board. Um, if that's okay for everyone, um, because we still have time, obviously. And I just want to make sure we get it down as low as we can before we have to have the initial really hard conversation. So if that works for you guys.
Patty?
I know this is moving in the wrong direction, but I, I don't know when to say this, so stop me if it's the wrong time. I really think that as we, moving in the wrong direction, meaning it's not lowering anything, but I think we need to figure out how to keep that elementary guidance position. Um, so if this is not the right time to say that, I, tell me when I should, but I think um, as you're looking at things, I'm, I'm, I'm looking, um, actually I'm guessing because I don't have the folder. Um, but I'm looking, I'm guessing about like what could go so that could stay. And I would love that to be part of the considerations for things. Just had to say it. Thank you.
So Patty, I made a note and I'll make sure I bring that up um, at our next meeting. So thank you for saying that, cause that's, that helps me kind of say, if we do this, then this, you know, I can come up with some options, so to speak.
Thank you.
So while I'm thinking of it, I just do wanna let people know that we do have a meeting next week. It was tentative, but we are going to have a meeting next week on March twenty-third. So just so, before I forget to tell you that. Kim?
Just related to Patty's question. Um, so do we currently have the social worker and a guidance counselor?
No, just the guidance counselor.
So Patty, would adding that social worker like was presented be okay with you or you want a guidance counselor and a social worker?
I think we need both.
Can I make clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
It wouldn't be eliminating our only elementary guidance counselor. If we, we, we have two already. This was a third one in addition, right?
But we didn't have a social worker. So we had, we have three guidance counselors currently and we're looking to go to two guidance counselors and a social worker.
Correct.
Yes.
And Patty, you want.
Patty wants three guidance counselors and a social worker.
I do. I do, and I'll tell you why. I, be, I want that, oh, I'm sorry. Can I just say, address that? Um, I, I want to, that is correct, Kim. Thank you for asking that question. I want that because we've talked a lot this year about the needs, uh, the mental health, social, emotional needs of our students during the pandemic and as we're hopefully transitioning from it. Um, and I just think that, I just think that that might be the most important thing to me anyway. So that's why.
Thanks, Patty. Did Tyler wanna say something or no? No? Anyone else?
No, not right now. I don't, I don't think.
Okay.
Can I ask this? And I don't, I keep meeting on this, but I, there are some things I agree with, with um, the whole guidance, social worker thing. Parts I just want clarification. What's the salary difference of a social worker versus what you're asking for? For, I mean, the social worker that you're asking for and a guidance counselor. Do you, you know?
The social worker will probably cost us more than a guidance counselor, cause it.
Do you know how much? The reason I'm asking is because based on your description of what a social worker does and based on what Patty is thinking the need for, is explaining the needs of the school or needs might be of kids with what's going on, it almost sounds like a social worker targets that need better than an actual guidance counselor. So that's why I'm asking for that.
Yeah. So all of the elementary guidance or all of the guidance people are on the teacher contract. But a social worker would have a separate outside contract, cause they wouldn't, they, they're not part of that. Um, but it would cost us a little bit more, but I will get you a, a comparison for next meeting, cause I think that's a great question. Yeah.
While you're figuring all that other numbers up, why not just add that to your list?
I think, no, I think that's a very good, like.
Sorry.
You have to.
But if, I mean, if, based on the description, I do, it seems like, I, I'm just curious, I guess.
I think you're right.
And if it's only a little bit of a difference and it targets the needs of what every, all the kids have gone through from um, everything standpoint.
From everything, yeah, the last two years. That's a very good question. So we will have that next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Are there any citizen comments not budget-related? Kelsey? Is that Kelsey?
Hi there, guys. You're doing great. Can you hear me okay? I just wanted to um, quick second to say happy birthday to Becky.
Oh, that's right. Rebecca's birthday was today.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so next on the agenda, are there any additions or adjustments to the rest of the agenda by the board or the superintendent?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Did the Nordic Ski Team receive a trophy for that?
Yes.
They did. Yes. Do we have a trophy case anywhere in the high school?
Yes, we do. Yes. Yeah. And it's actually pretty full of hardware right now. Um, usually what they do is when they win something new, they actually display it on the outside of the office. And then at the end of the school year, then they'll move it into the actual trophy case. So thank you for asking that.
No adjustments or additions? Okay, so we'll move on to our action items. The first one is approval of the minutes of March second. Do I have a motion?
I move, we accept the minutes of March second.
So it's been moved and, and seconded to approve the minutes of March second? Any discussion? All right, Kim?
It's staying. Sorry, I wasn't here.
Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Uh, Jay's not here. Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Not here. Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yep.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
So passes with one extension. Okay, passes with one extension. The next one is to accept the resignation due to retirement of preschool science teacher Cheryl Marviny.
Motion to accept acceptance of resignation due to retirement, high school teacher Cheryl Marviny.
Second.
Second with regret. Any discussion? Alrighty, uh, Kim?
Yes.
Dave Gilme?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes, and Cheryl, I see you on here and I just wanna say thank you for being my son's advisor extraordinaire.
Yay. Rebecca?
I don't want to, but I will say yes.
Betty?
Yes, again with regret.
Um, Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yeah, yes.
Passes unanimously. So the next one is to approve, approval to apply for adult ed grant from the main apprenticeship program. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the application for adult education grant for main apprenticeship program.
Second.
Any discussion?
There is a packet and I have you here to talk about it, so.
Is a packet in our packet?
And.
So as, so before you guys vote, I wanna bring Steve up so he can, um, it's a pretty detailed grant, but I thought it would be easier if Steve was here to explain it a little bit to you as to what he's applying for. And as he walks up, I'm going to ask forgiveness, um, because I've actually already signed off on the grant. Um, it was brought to my attention by policy. You guys should be approving this before I sign it. So I'm, that's why I was like, we need to get this out now.
Steve, you better have a good presentation right now.
Um, but it's my fault, so I, I just wanna be very candid about that. I, I didn't read the policy close enough. And I'll take that one. Um, so please don't hold that against Steve. Uh, Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
So, so quite honestly, in the course of every year, I do apply for a, a significant amount of grant funds. Um, and they're usually things that we receive every year, um, Apple funds, uh, main college career access grants. Um, and then we're currently working with the continually continuity of service grant as well. And that's about thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, when I went to Jay, I, I kind of thought, well, I, I do all kinds of grant work all the time. Um, but this one's a little bit different as you'll come to find out in a minute. So, um, you know, obviously our grant program, I, I mean, our CDL program has grown. Um, and for you who've been here for a while, um, you know, I, I go back nine years ago um, to when we actually had our CDL vehicle, it lost its transmission. And I, you know, was pretty concerned because when I went to her at the time, um, she said, you don't have any money to fix it. And uh, so we actually were lucky to be able to continue our CDL program because we were able to get a, a very sizable donation that allowed us to buy a new vehicle or new to us vehicle that replaced the one that the transmission failed and we were able to continue the program. It had meant for that generous contribution, which was actually made by our CDL instructor at the time, um, who still works for us. Um, we would not have a CDL program probably to this day. Um, and the reason I tell you that is this year I had to write a check for a little over twelve thousand dollars for a new transmission in this vehicle and I didn't even blink an eye. Um, it's come a long way. You probably saw it earlier when I was saying that I'd like to buy a vehicle this year. You know, I, I have enough money where I could go out and buy a vehicle without any difficulty. Uh, but it took me nine years to get here and I'm still looking toward the future. I often say I've got twelve more years before I retire. I want our program, our CDL program here to be the best in the state. Um, and so I, I will, I will get, one of the ways to get there obviously is uh, grant funding. And I'm gonna tell you why that's so critical. Um, there is a high need for truck drivers, of class B especially. Um, they estimate around over a thousand open positions in the state right now. I want you to go out when you go home tonight or tomorrow, and, and when you're out on the road, look for how many dump trucks you see, uh, see on the road. Oil, propane trucks, box trucks that do our food delivery, sanitation and septic service, bucket trucks like Lucas Tree that do tree cutting, CMP that do line work, lumber delivery. lumber. Um, and of course, all of our school buses, our passenger buses. You're gonna be shocked because there are a lot of those vehicles on the road and those are the ones, that's where the danger is, that we're gonna lose those services. And so there are a lot of people out there, I feel, that would probably go into trucking, but there are hurdles in spa, in place that don't allow them to get there. Some don't have the skills to be able to apply for a job, do simple things like have the ability to go in and do an interview or to be able to write a resume. Um, and so they need some assistance. And so they need some assistance. Some of them can't afford our CDL class, which I, it's a not-for-profit organization, and so because of that, we keep our costs really low. Obviously, I have to do things like cover diesel fuel, wear and tear in vehicles, pay my instructors, you know, buy instructional materials. There's a lot there. But I try to keep that bottom line just as low as possible, so it doesn't hurt the students. It doesn't become a roadblock to them being able to take the class. But there are still a lot of people that, even though it's $3,500, it might as well be a million if you don't have it. And so those are the people that really need our help. I have worked with multiple state organizations. I feel as though probably around 70% to 75% of the people that come to my class, I probably can get some, some type of support through Vocation Rehabilitation, the HOPE Scholarship, Eastern Maine Development Corporation, or the Career Center, where they can get the class probably for free, or at a reduced cost. Trying to help those people that struggle the hardest. For those who don't qualify, I've also worked with a local bank to be able to offer a 0% interest loan. So even if you don't qualify, you can take out a loan, you don't, you can take up to two years to pay it back, and you don't have to start paying on it for 60 days after you finish the class. So I've tried to line up things so that no matter who you are, or where you are financially, you're probably going to be able to come in and take that class. Now, last year, I also worked with Bangor, Bangor Adult Education, and they had a sizable grant they received from the state. And they were able to put 30 people through our program to drive school bus. We're doing our final class in April. So we're trying to get people into the field of school bus driving, so we can start to answer some of these problems, obviously, that we're having with school transportation. Well, I looked at the Bangor grant. That doesn't look too hard to write. I probably could do something like that myself. So, I went ahead and I applied for an apprentice grant through the Department of Labor. They have about $12 million they want to expend. I'm up against some pretty stiff competition. I was in the phone call with Jackson Lab, University of Maine System, and a couple other organizations who have professional grant-writing teams, not just me. But I did put, take a couple days, and I organized a grant, and I did apply. You know, if you don't, if you don't try, you never know. And so, if I get the grant funds, I'd be able to put 60 people through our program for free for the next three years. That's what I asked for. That's the maximum. So, with those funds, I would, I'm only 32 hours a week, and if I expand our program like I'm thinking, I probably wouldn't be able to continue to work 32 hours a week. So I would probably make myself 40 hours. That would be one of the things that I would do with the grant funds. I would also find some type of secretarial support. There's an awful lot of paperwork, invoicing, tracking of drug tests, physicals, those types of things that are, there's a lot there that would really need some type of assistance in the office, answering phones, connecting with students, and those types of things. So I would add that. I would add, I would make our CDL instructors, who are currently part-time, full-time. So all the things that would build up to make ourselves a pretty robust program. We would also provide those jobs and workforce skills training that I had talked about, where if a student was struggling to find a job, and I always say that we don't have a certificate program. I'm not, I don't want to give a student a certificate of completion. I want to give them a certificate of completion and get them a job within six weeks. So we want to push them into employment. And so helping them with those workforce skills would be a critical part of the grant as well. We're also targeting certain groups that are outside of the norm from what I see in truck driving. So we're looking at, obviously, the jobless, but also minorities, women, justice-involved individuals, and people, you know, students around, or 16 to 24 years old. Again, tying into what I had mentioned before, you know, I'd ask for $30,000, but if I can get the grant, then I would be training those people through the grant and not through local. One of the other components of the grant is working with local employers. And so, I have actually reached out to a number of employers in this area as well as well beyond. So like, I had support letters from City of Bangor, Town of Orno, Augusta Fuel Company, Augusta, Adult Ed obviously wrote letters of support, Waterville Adult Ed, Gardner, Winthrop, because they will also help me provide workforce skills if somebody lives in those areas rather than have them come here. Also, working with Bangor Adult Education, they were very supportive of the grant, understanding that there is such a critical need, and Beale's College as well. So, funny, come up here talking about a grant that I might not even get. However, if we do manage to get it, and I will find out by May, the, the minimum grant amount that they'll be able to provide is 250,000. I asked for 1,080,000, and that would completely fund me for all three years, all the program expansion and everything. So, that's what I'm open to receive. Any questions?
Impressive.
Anybody have any questions?
Good luck.
Right.
We all have our fingers crossed.
We'll keep our fingers crossed for it.
There's got to be someone good at grant that knows how to write grants, that would volunteer, do you think? I mean, not, obviously. I'm sure you did a fabulous job. I'm just saying, hey, we're looking for a million dollars. I feel like that's some, and/or the, the interviewing and resume writing, Steve, volunteers in the business community that would help students do that. That seems like an amazing thing to do.
We actually, part of, part of what I do is, we actually form a, a program instead of accounting. A few years ago, started, we, we started kind of the joint force. So Augusta, all those ones I mentioned, Gardner, Waterville. And what we're going to be doing is, part of the grant funds would actually go to, to help pay for those costs. So if somebody was living in Waterville, but they were taking my CDL class, and they needed assistance, they could go over to Waterville Adult Ed and get those supports. So they could do the resume writing, they could do the interviewing, and then I would, I would simply pay that individual for their time.
Waterville has that service. You would just have to pay for the service through Waterville.
Yes, yeah. And a lot of those big programs actually have more robust, well, they have a larger ability to be able to provide those services.
So you wouldn't be bringing those services here? You'd be, fine, basically putting the student in touch with whoever it was that they needed to do it with?
My strength here is CDL. Their strength here is, you know, career counseling.
I got you.
They, they have dedicated people to be able to do that. I have dedicated people to really provide CDL. There's a reason why, you know, Eastern Maine Community College right now used to have a CDL program. Mid-Maine Community College used to have a CDL program. Nobody can find instructors. Three. And it's because it's, you've got to, you've got to pay them what it's worth, and you've got to treat them well, and you have to invest in them. And right now, we have a new one, a new hire. Hopefully, he's going to be hired here in the next couple of weeks. But he was a CDL driver and had been for many years. So I were working to get him his instructor certificate, and that, it's multiple steps in that. Pay for that course, a lot like Kelly does with the school bus drivers. You know, she's, she's paying for their training and their support, so that they sign a contract worth us for a year, and I'm going to do the same thing. I'm going to, I'm going to provide support for that person to get the training, and then they'll have some type of contract. And if, you know, honestly, if I could get them to work for us for a year, the amount of funds that they would pull in because of that would be well worth the small investment.
I think it's amazing. Well done.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for all that work you put into it. So hopefully it'll pay off, and keep our fingers crossed. We can't wait to hear.
Even if it didn't, Steve, it sounds like you've grown the program significantly. I think it's really impressive.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay, so, we'll do the vote.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, for saving me.
Jay, do you, normally, any grants do we have to approve, or was this just different?
This was different because of the size of it. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And we, and it's, it's pretty significant, so I thought, I don't want you guys to be surprised when you hear, hey, what? We got a grant? What? We didn't even know we applied for it. So, it didn't feel right. Thank you for Donna, for pointing out the policy and making sure I did what I was supposed to do. Yeah. She keeps me on the straight and narrow. Yeah. Okay, so let's do a quick vote. Kim?
I mean, yes.
Dane Gilme?
Yes.
Oh, lost my place. Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
And David Twitchell?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
So now that that's passed, Jay, we'll just tell you we forgive you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so next, we have a couple of discussion items. The first one is the board evaluation. David and Jay and I have been talking about, you know, how, how do we want to proceed with evaluating our work? Who do we want to hear from? How are we going to do this? So just wanted to open up a discussion with you folks to see what thoughts and ideas that you might have around that. And we were thinking that we, we want to do it by the end of the year so that we can get some feedback to move forward next year. So, any thoughts or ideas around that? We did a self-evaluation in the past, and, and this actually, what we're thinking about, it opens it up, it expands it to more than just a self-evaluation, to a evaluation in general. Like, we, we might ask the teachers to evaluate us, we might ask the community to evaluate us. So we've been, we've been having some conversations around how to continue with that. And we thought maybe the communications, the newly formed Communications Committee, is anyone here on that?
I am.
I am.
Tyler?
I am as well.
I am too.
So we were thinking, maybe we could have the Communication Committee start to work on it, and we could share what we've had for conversations with them. But we didn't really want to move too fast without the approval of the rest of the board.
What do you?
Well, we've done, we've done a self-evaluation, but for Jay, it was us. He didn't do his, he did his own self-evaluation, but then also we evaluated, the administration evaluated it. And it seemed to be to us a more,
I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, more thorough.
So, are you thinking of a survey, and is it going to be multiple choice? Or are we going to have like eons, pages upon pages of words?
That is something that we've been discussing, you know, what, how would we, what would the format of it be? And how would we get it out there? And how many question, you know, we don't want too many questions. And we have to make sure that the questions that we have on the survey are getting at what we want to get at. And we thought we could, actually, I just, I saw a survey that the MSBA did for their members, and there were some pretty good questions on it that I thought, you know, I could share with people that we can maybe include, and then maybe some of the self-evaluation questions we could look at and see if we want to include some of them. And, and we were thinking that maybe the same format that we used for Jay's evaluation. Was that Survey Monkey? Is that what?
Yes, yeah.
So, those are the ideas that we have, but we wanted to give it, we wanted to put, put it out to other people to get more ideas.
And I think feedback's valuable. I just, if it was in like the Jay format, all I can figure out, all I can think about is all of those comments. And that seems like it would be too much for us to, yeah, properly digest and be able to implement change. So, I think how it is delivered and the questions, and then to, I mean, written responses are great until it gets, depending on how many people answer the survey, it gets to be too much. And then, right, the feedback, I guess, would be my only concern.
And those are some of the conversations that we've had too.
That would be my only.
How do we really want to do this so that it would be valuable for us, so that we could really get, take?
That would be my only, yeah, yeah.
Tyler?
Yeah, I, I, you're good. I definitely agree with that logic. I think, for me, in evaluating, you know, how, how I've been on the board, I think definitely getting the longer form from the administrative team and the teachers is probably the most valuable, and then maybe something a little bit less intense from the community members. So that way, we have more sense, I think, you know, I think at the end of the day, you know, hearing what the staff has to say, and the administrative team who we work, you know, most directly with is probably the most important. But I think getting a, at least a general feedback from the community, because we all, we are all held accountable, accountable every two, or one to three years. So I think having a more broad survey for them, and then a more, you know, robust survey for staff and the admin team.
Patty?
I totally agree with Kim and Tyler. And I, I wondered if, I wondered how the comments that are made on Jay's evaluation get, like, how does that, it's, it seems like somebody goes through them and then, like, makes them into data somehow. Like, how is that, does anybody know how that is done, or who does that, or if it's a huge, big process? Because I, I almost wonder if, I don't want to speak for anybody else on the Communications Committee, but I wonder if that could be a place. I think the comments are really important, and I also think that, Kim, I agree with what you said, that it could be too huge to make manageable and usable. But I, but I wonder if the method that is used to call and organize and, and make sort of like conclusion statements about the comments on Jay's evaluation could be used on an evaluation for us, but I just don't know what that process is. And then I also wonder if the Communications Committee could be the, the place where the comments get called through if there isn't a different process.
So I don't know that there is a process.
No.
I don't think there is. I'm looking at Donna and Jay to see if, I think the comments are just.
It goes under each question, right? I feel like as we look at his, each question has its own set of comments. So if someone chose not to comment, it's obviously blank. That might be why it looks like it's compiled. Patty, because not everybody comments.
There are scales that you, you know, one, two, three, four, five, and then people can add a comment if they want, but it's no work for us once it's in Survey Monkey. That's what we, you guys see at evaluation time, is what comes out from, you know, like, just pulling the survey.
Survey Monkey just spits it all out.
Yeah, yeah.
So, well, that was what we, we were thinking about, Patty, is just having, having the Communications Committee have a discussion about it, and maybe work on what, you know, what would be the best way to do this, if we want to move ahead and do it. And I, I just want to make sure that, before we do put any work into this, that the rest of the board wants to do. So can I just, like, get a thumbs up? Patty? Kelsey? What time is it? Nine o'clock?
I get that. Well, has, I mean, how was it executed historically? Has this been done before, for a whole board evaluation?
No, this has not been done, not in my time anyway, 22 years that I have.
Was this asked for specifically from, from folks? For us to do this?
I'm going to let David answer that question.
I, I don't think it was asked for from the public. It was perhaps, I think, initiated by me because I looked at self-evaluation as really insufficient, whereas we've been talking about wanting further input from the community, from our teams. And I look at, you know, sure, I'd be glad to do my own self-evaluation each year at work, but for some reason, my manager insists on being part of it. And so I think as a board, we have the responsibility to get more feedback on our performance than just ourselves.
And, and we have been doing self-evaluations for a couple. But I think that, that, to go along with what David said, I think that's where it came from, thinking, you know, the self, it's good for us personally, but how are we as a board doing according to the public? Which, when I say the public, I mean all of our constituents. So, that's where it came from.
Okay, I can just dip behind that. Um, okay.
Yeah, I think like, community, you keep it not vague, but not as narrow, not narrow, but, okay, I agree, like, self-evaluations, I feel like, are useless. I think I'm the best, you know, but, having everyone else weigh in on the language from the board and the administration, I think that's key for us, because we're supposed to be the team that keeps moving the district together. And then having the community weigh in on, not as big of topics, but maybe like more communication, you know, stuff like that. I totally agree.
So how do we want to move forward?
Just trying to, yeah. I, I mean, the Communication Committee, I'm sure, would entertain trying to pull this together. I know I wouldn't mind, that's just thinking out loud here. Of course, we're all tired at this point. I know I wouldn't mind, that's just thinking out loud here, of course, we're all tired at this point, um, is, you know, like, what are we trying to? When, twenty-six nights? When is it?
Twenty-nine?
Think so, yeah.
You wanted to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can just leave it at that, we'll, I'll just talk about it then, and I'd be glad to be part of that conversation too, that night, so. Um, if we want to go ahead and do that, then we can bring some information back after that. So, perfect.
Kathy?
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Hey, Kathy?
So the last thing, does somebody say my name?
I did, Patty did. Hi, it's Patty. Um, I just wanted to say that I think it would be really helpful in, if you're willing, thank you to come to that communications meeting, because if you have that info from the MSBA, I, I just, I liked your idea of blending some different things, or using these different things, um, as a basis from which to develop our own, and, uh, you have that, so that would be really helpful, thank you.
Sure. I'll bring it. Okay, so the next of the last thing on our agenda is, um, we've had some questions for some board members about our school nutrition program. So, um, David and I have been talking to Jay about how we can get some information. So Jay got some information from Jen, and he has shared it with us in a packet in our folders. So was there, did, if people didn't get a chance to look at it, do you want to talk about the highlights?
Yeah, I'm not gonna read that all to you guys, I'll let you guys kind of go through that. Um, but I'll give you just a few quick highlights. And then, um, while that's going on, um, I asked Jen to snap some pictures, and I threw them on a slide so that you can see that this is what kind of everything looks like going forward, so they'll, they'll have that up in just a minute. So on the first page is the breakfast program, um, quick guide. Um, notice like it, it lists out for you, this is what Jen needs to follow as she's planning a menu, and as far as putting breakfast together, um, one of the things that she wanted me to make sure that you guys know is when you see on this paper, and I'm just using breakfast first, uh, to start with, daily minimums, it says like one ounce. She gives more than that, but you must give at least that. So I don't want you guys to think, well, wait a minute, they're only getting an ounce, that doesn't make any sense, that's the minimum. She does exceed those minimums going forward. The second page is actually about the school lunch program. Um, one of the things that she also wanted me to make sure that I shared with you guys is that when you're looking at the grain section, a lot of people go, is it whole grain, or is it just white, what's going on? In order to serve, whether it's any kind of grain, um, it must be at least fifty-one percent whole grain by federal standards that she has to follow. So anything that she's cooking that's grain-related, bread-related, it has to be at least fifty-one percent whole grain, otherwise she can't use it. Um, so she wanted me to make sure she pointed that out. Again, I'm not gonna read all of that to you, because there's a lot that's there. When they say meat alternatives, um, that includes things like yogurt, cheeses, cheese and other proteins. Um, so it's not just meat, there's other things, um, there for people. Vegetables, there are five subgroups, and she must meet, um, she must choose from each of those subgroups, um, through the course of the week, so you can't give the same thing over and over and over again. She has to actually mix it up. Those subgroups are actually on page three. Um, and they show you what those subgroups look like, um, so that you guys have an idea of what that actually means, um, as far as that goes um, on there. And that's the federal one, so you'll know it's at the bottom, it says Connecticut State. That's like Jen was like, ours looks horrible, this one's so much easier to read, let's give them that one, which totally made sense. Um, and then on, um, the back of that second page where it says other versus sir, um, students, when they go through the lunch line, have to take at least three of the components in order to be able to count that as a lunch. Um, so, um, students must be offered all five, and they must choose at least three of them in order to be able to get, like, you know, it's the subsidy for the food. Um, so if a student goes through and actually hasn't chosen at least three of the offered items, we actually say to the student, you have to go back and choose one more, as an example. They can choose more, they can choose to have all five that's offered, but they must choose at least three in order for it to count, um, as a meal. So, again, there's a lot of other information there, um, I'll ask you guys to look it over. Please don't hesitate, please don't hesitate. If you've got questions, Jen is more than, um, willing to answer more questions, provide the information, um, going forward. And I just, I guess I want to say, when I said to Jen, snap some pictures, she didn't go out. This, this is what it normally looks like across the district. I happen to be at Reed Field Elementary School, um, at lunchtime today, and their salad bar was absolutely amazing, what was on that salad bar. So that wasn't like, I know she didn't stage that for me, this is what it looks like on a normal basis. And certainly if you guys would like more pictures, or if you ever want to come and eat, um, we'd love to invite you to come and eat sometime so that you can see that, whether it's the elementary, middle, um, or high school. Um, obviously COVID is changing things, so, um, if you want to come and have a meal with us, we would love for you to do that, um, at some point. So, again, please reach out with any questions, I'm not gonna read it all to you, I'm just hitting a couple of the highlights she asked that I share with you. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one question.
Yeah.
Now, you're saying every child needs to take three?
Yep.
Now, how does that count? Okay, you have to take three, how much of one of those three is gonna end up in the garbage can, right? That they could have saved for someone else.
Right, so like, for example, like the fruit, if they take a fruit and go through a line, but they don't actually use the fruit, um, like you see the bananas and oranges, we actually have in every cafeteria a place where those are put aside, and then they are recycled for snacks, for students to eat snacks, so.
That's illegal, once they get home.
We're okay to do that, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. It's, uh, yeah, it's one of those things when they're going through the line, in order for Jen to be able to kind of charge things off and get full subsidy, they have to have at least three. What they do when they get there, we don't ever force anybody to eat something, but.
Cause I'm wondering how much of that's gonna end up in the garbage.
Yeah, exactly.
Or it could have been given to somebody.
But if we're gonna charge, it's all that charging off and getting the subsidy back for the meal, that's what it's all about. But that's a great, like, they try to minimize that and recycle stuff that can be recycled, um, for those students that need it. A lot of times they'll have a basket of fruit that students have put there, and they bring it to the office. So in the afternoon, if somebody wants a snack, that's what's offered to them, versus like crackers, or, you know, stuff like that. You want a banana, there's one right here, and believe it or not, most of the time, it gets eaten, so. Yeah, no, great question.
Any other questions or? So my only question, Jay, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, the, the food that's actually being cooked, not all schools have like the ovens and every, so they, they're not cooking food in every oven.
No, they are not, no.
They're cooking at the high school.
In this building, yeah, so every, the, the, the warm meals are cooked. Most of the warm meals that go out to the elementary schools are cooked at the high school, and then the middle school manages the middle school. So we have a food van that actually does a run, so things are cooked, and then it's brought over to the food, uh, to each of the elementary schools, and they get it ready, re-warm it, serve it, et cetera, like that, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, like the, the food menu is pretty decent, but it's like some of these days they have like pretzels with cheese.
Yeah.
And garlic sticks with marinara. And then like mozzarella sticks, I don't understand how that's an equivalent protein, I know cheese is considered
protein. Exactly.
Very much high in fat, yeah. That's like, that was my, like, looking at the kids' menu, like, oh, I had a corn dog thing, did you just have like mozzarella sticks? My name, like, yeah, like, nice, so where's the nutrition? Cheese or something.
Yeah. I will ask Jen to explain that in a little more detail, because I'm not even gonna try to do that, I know there's a explanation, but I don't know it. So I will ask Jen that specific question and ask for, like, how, how does that count? Like you just said, I think that's very fair, so.
Do we know like the, I'm not crying too biggy, but like the beef that they're using, is it?
I'll ask Jen.
Processed.
Yep. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
I will find out, no, that's very fair, right?
I just have a bigger.
Yeah, we all laugh about it, but it's like, the inside joke in my school was, oh, it's mystery meat Monday, you know, that kind of thing, so I get what you're asking. Yeah. Absolutely.
And I get the other point of view, like, where if I felt that compelled that to some of my kids, their own lunch, but I'm not one to pay attention. It's too expensive.
And they can, they can get chocolate milk instead of white milk?
Yes, and that counts on the, um,
It counts as one of the five, or the milk.
It counts as one of the five, yeah, because I'll hear a lot of people say, well, they're drinking chocolate milk, and it actually is just as nutritious as regular milk. And I know that, like, goes against.
Full of sugar, though, right?
So it's, yeah, but it does count, and it wouldn't be offered by, like, we wouldn't be allowed to carry chocolate milk if it didn't meet some guideline somewhere, so. Um, otherwise they would say, no, no chocolate milk, you can't even serve it.
Is water offered?
Yes, it is, yeah. Each school, there should be water, um, and there should be, yep, there should be water in every school offered, yeah. And cups to be able to get that stuff, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jake, and thank Jen for giving us that information.
I absolutely will, and I have a few questions that I will get answers to and follow up with you guys.
So I'm just gonna follow up on chocolate milk, do we have to have chocolate milk?
I'll ask her that.
I know the kids love it, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, but one of, some of the meals that we had late sixties, early seventies at Manchester Elementary School, I'd give anything.
Yeah.
To have one of those meals, yeah, they were so good.
Home-cooked meals.
They were so good, yeah.
Oh, yes, there was also seven month ladies in there that were, thank you.
They were baking bread and doing all that really. Whole stuff, yeah, it was good.
But, yeah.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'm with the weirder.
Any, uh, anybody in favor of adjourning? Do we have to do a whole?
No, we do not.
Yes, we're in favor of.
Who's the one that made the motion?
Who made the motion, Kim?
Kim, great.
And Betty, second.
And Betty, second.
So just, I just want to say that our norms were followed very well tonight, so thank you all very much for adhering to all of the things that we said we would do. Yes, awesome.
And again, as we're going forward, guys, please don't hesitate to reach out, especially with all the information I shared tonight, because you'll probably go home and say, I should have asked that, because I don't know what he said there, so please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, it's, it's always fun doing projects, so.